9:09 and we are now reconvened in open session. We will now hear action items on, action on closed session items. Mr. Burdine.
Yes, Madam President. I move to appoint Damian Vilts to the position of Executive Director, Facilities and Operations.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Burdine and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Mr. Burdine.
Yes, Madam President. I move to appoint Jason Swallow to the position of Elementary School Principal and to approve him as a Texas Teacher Evaluation Support System Appraiser for the 2016-17.
We have a motion by Mr. Burdine and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Mrs. James. Sorry, didn't mean to catch you off guard there.
I move to appoint Roberts Camardo to the position of General Counsel.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Mr. George.
Yes. Yes, Madam President. I move to appoint Rodney Chant to the position of Athletic Director.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. George and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Ms. Heliger.
I do. Best for last.
Best for last, alright. So, Madam President, I move to propose termination of Shamika Doyle's term employment contract for good cause and to authorize the superintendent or his designated need to notify Ms. Doyle of this action in accordance with applicable laws and policies.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Heliger and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Moving on to Board Members' Reports. We will start with the trustees, Board of Trustees Training Report. Is that Mrs. Kaiser? Who's giving the training report? Oh, you don't, we don't. Do we not read it?
Yes, we do.
I think we have to read it.
Yes, I think we do as well.
I'll read it if, is it in here?
I don't know if it is or not. Let's see. Let's move on, let's skip it and move on to the Activity Report and then we'll come back to it.
Alright, I'll find it.
Ms. Heliger.
Board Members, Board Member District Activities Report as of December, for today, for the month of December, end of November, the high school basketball games, they attended Fort Bend Legislative Conference at Lost Pines, the NAAC Freedom Fund Banquet, Internal Audit Committee Meeting, Division and Planning Committee Meeting, attendance at Boundaries Community Meeting, Fort Bend ISD VIPs Salute Breakfast, Bridgepoint High School Choir Concert, Fort Bend ISD Legislators Breakfast, Sugar Shindig Winter Lunch and at Bargate Elementary School, Bridgepoint High School Academic Excellence Awards Ceremony, Marshall High School Academic Excellence Awards, Fort Bend Chamber Education Division with TASB represented, Mr. Campbell, I believe, Austin High School Academic Excellence Award, Bush High School Academic Excellence Awards, Kepner High School Academic Excellence Awards, Greater Houston Partnership State Relations Committee Meeting, Marshall High School Football Playoff Games, Holiday Cora Festival, SHAC Meeting, Austin Orchestra Performance, Lakeview Spelling B, Go Public Golf Coast Meeting. We've been pretty busy.
Can you please, I'd like to add the Elkins High School Academic Excellence Awards too.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Thank you, Ms. Heliger, for that report. I think we're now ready to do the Board of Trustees Training Report. Mrs. James, thank you for finding that for us.
Yes, so there are three tiers of requirements. Tier one is a local orientation, the Texas Education Code Orientation or Update, and all Fort Bend ISD trustees have met the tier one requirements. Tier two is the team building and assessment requirement, which is a minimum of three hours annually and all Fort Bend ISD, with the superintendent, I might add, and all Fort Bend ISD trustees have met this requirement. And tier three is a continuing education and assess needs, which for new trustees is a 10-hour minimum requirement, and for experienced board members, it's a five-hour minimum. And all Fort Bend ISD trustees have exceeded the tier three requirements. In addition, Board President Kristen Tosan has distributed the Framework for School Board Development, Board Policy, BBD Exhibit to all the trustees and the superintendent, and that meets the requirement for having that distributed to the team of eight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. James. We appreciate you doing that. Any additional comments by the board members?
I would like to add that for a first-year board member, you need 10 years of continuing education. The second year and thereafter is five years annually. Mrs. James has sent...
Hours.
I'm sorry, hours. Although Mrs. James has 51 and a half hours for this year. She set a new record. All of the Fort Bend ISD trustees far exceed the minimum five hours of training necessary. And I'd just like everybody to know that.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. And I'd like to just say that you have over 40 hours. And I am, you know, and I'm not even sure that counts, all the things that you've attended and participated in or led, so thank you very much.
Well, I think it's clear that this board does their job and gets their training. And I know that there's a lot circulating out there about board training and we take it very seriously. So, thank you for making that report for us. I think we have a couple of special reports tonight. We'll start with Mr. George.
Yes, Madam President. And I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention and also the people who are interested in. I attended the Texas Association of Gifted and Talented Conference last week. It was an amazing event, more than 2,300 attendees, 150-plus breakout session geared towards teaching, what we need to do to educate a new generation of students born into the world of social media and instant news. And they featured wonderful speakers and I'll be brief, and few things I learned from there is very interesting. Probably, I'm not a teacher, so it's something new to me. I learned this, solving a math problem or finding an answer to a question is no more teaching. And I didn't know that there are apps out there, you could scan the math problem and give you step-by-step answers. And so, it's an, it's an evolving education era we are living in and they are specifically focusing about how to educate children, especially high achievers and gifted and talented. And, and also, you can always Google and find an answer. So, what is the role of a teacher? So, we have to think beyond traditional teaching. That's what I learned from there. And also, I learned we cannot Google certain things. And why I'm saying this all while attending this event, I have, I learned a lot of stuff as a board member or a community member, but I, I met few of our administration members and handful of teachers. And we have, I believe, I strongly believe, our elementary school and middle school, every school should be represented there somehow. And that's my recommendation because they could, I don't know how they select, how they select attendees to attend this program, but I recommend next year it's going to be in Houston. And I hope we could find at least one or two teachers from our elementary and middle school campuses, we could send there so that they could come and teach their colleagues about the new techniques, new way we can educate our children. And I know we are, we might be doing a lot of this, but, and also they have a lot of free resources available for students to, sorry, teachers to learn and teach our students. So, the reason I'm saying this, because I hope we consider sending every campus at least one or two teachers to next event, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. George. We appreciate you attending that and we appreciate you bringing back that information. Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Madam President. In my capacity on the TASB Board of Directors, I attended the December meeting, December 1st through 3rd in Austin, Texas. Couple of the comments or topics that were touched on, number one was the A through F Accountable Rating System. Commissioner Mike Murath spent two hours with the TASB Board going over that. He commented that he intends to take the better result of Domain One or Domain Two, so growth or proficiency, for a full weight of 35% when presenting his findings on the AF results to the Legislature. And Domain Four is still left blank at this time, but everything else remains as is. And he believes this is the best way to fairly judge all districts, regardless of the level of Title I students, and that is neither proficiency or growth would penalize a school. So, it seems a fairly reasonable proposal. I don't know if we should expect pushback from the Legislature in that case, but we may. The second topic was school finance. And as you know, school finance, the Texas Supreme Court ruled that the current system is, is okay, but it's antiquated and it needs to be revised. And as, of course, as you know, as our CAT appraisal value increases in value, more homes are built, more businesses are built, and the district realizes the benefit of that, the state reduces their contribution by a corresponding amount 12 months later. So, there may be a total, I don't know how many people in the state really fully understand the current school finance funding formula, but it's not a lot. We're always mentioning that to the Legislature. They're always pushing back on us, saying, "Well, if you've got a better idea, let's hear it." So, TASB has come up with a plan that has simplified this and attempts to hold harmless all school districts and to stabilize school funding because our biggest expenditures are for salaries and benefits. Teaching is a labor intensive endeavor and we need to take care of our teachers and it's difficult to do when you have an unstable funding source. So, the TASB plan seeks to do just that. I've included it in your packet. Thirdly, School Board Governance. TASB is going to host a conference in Austin in January entitled, "How Boards Affect Student Outcomes: An Exceptional Governance Summit." You may have received some information from this in the mail. Some of us may attend that. And that is, I'll end my report there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. As always, we appreciate your service and thank you for bringing that information back to us. Finally, I'm going to end out the board reports by giving an update on the Legislative Committee and some of the work that we've been doing. I'm glad we have a little bit of an audience. We've given out the, some materials that have been created by Mrs. Porter and her excellent team that put our legislative priorities and the resolutions we passed into a single packet. And these materials will be going to some of our legislators and surrounding school districts and can be passed out to our community. And it's, I think it's a very nice packet of information. Part of it, as you'll, as you look through it, you'll see that some hashtags have been created. We've tried to make it easy for community members and teachers and staff and local government officials to talk about these issues that impact education, public education. And so, the hashtags will allow us to, will allow people to, to basically refer to one of these resolutions and we'll be able to follow trends and that kind of thing, especially as the legislative session kicks off. So, I encourage not only all of the board members and staff members to get this out to the community, but the community members to please take this back to those in your community and in your schools and let them know about the priorities that have been passed by the board that impact your children and your, really the schools in your community. And those, we have a webpage that those can be found online and we can get anyone materials that needs them. We're working on push cards as well, something that's small, that can be handed out, that will just give bullet points about the priorities and we'll have the hashtags on there. So, we're trying to make it as easy as possible for everyone to get involved. And literally, one of our state reps said they are not getting any emails or any feedback about public education initiatives. And so, we have got to get our community moving on these issues. They're getting more feedback about online fantasy football gambling or, and things such as that than they are about, about issues that impact our kids directly. So, we really need to get that moving. The next thing, we had a legislative breakfast in which all of our local representatives attended. John Zurwass, Rick Miller, Ron Reynolds, Phil Stevenson, and Alma Allen. And two of the three state senators were represented by staff members. Lois Colcorston, Joan Huffman, and Senator Boris Miles couldn't attend but has asked to meet to discuss our priorities. Also in attendance were Mr. Steve Bassett to discuss our school finance issues, Mrs. Nancy Porter, who has been working with me on the Legislative Committee, Mr. Jim Rice, and Ms. Grail James, who have been working on legislative initiatives as well. We presented the materials. We had a very good conversation and left with a lot of support, I think, from our legislators. And we'll see if there's any action to back that up, but we've got to keep talking to them about these issues. Next, we are trying to, to put together a legislative coalition of local community members, business members, school districts that, neighboring school districts and, and other local school districts. We're going to have a meeting this week in KDISD that's going to kick some of that off with the school districts. We're having a joint meeting with the Sugar Land City Council. You guys should have that on your calendars. And we're working on one with Missouri City City Council as well. So, that, that ends the update. And if anyone has any questions, you guys can see me or Mrs. Porter. We will now move on to our consent agenda. We're going to pull item 11B in its entirety. Do we have any other items to be pulled?
Madam President, I move to approve Consent Agenda as presented with the exception of item 11B.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Ms. Heliger. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. We'll now consider item 11B.
Madam President, I move to approve item 11B, one and two as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Ms. Heliger. Do we have discussion? Mrs. James.
This is Mrs. Tosan. Thank you very much. I just have a couple of questions for, for Mr. Perez. I'm looking at the project budget and I think when we ended our conversation last time, we were talking about the Rosa Parks design fees being high in relationship to the, to the total project as comparison to the other ones. And then I also noticed when I was looking at that, that the contingency, it looks like the construction contingency is 20%, where the contingency in the other projects in this bid package is only 10%. And I wondered if you could explain that to us, please.
Yes, ma'am. The, the reason for the 20% is that this project budget is so small that 10% would have been approximately $7,000, just a little over $7,000. And any change that we have, I mean, it doesn't take long to eat up 7,000. So, we felt that it'd be prudent to go ahead and bump this one up to 20%.
Alright, so as a follow-up to that, if there's money left over that you don't need, in other words, I guess in this project or in any of them, then what happens to those extra funds that we've approved but, but aren't needed in the contingency or in the design fee category?
Yes, ma'am. By, by contract at the end of, of this project, we would go ahead and make a final amendment to the architectural contract and then those fees would be reduced at that point. And anything left over would go into program contingency.
Okay, so it goes into the program contingency and then is subject to, to the resolution, to the resolution that we have with this bond referendum. So, then it has to come back to the board to be spent, is what I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
Okay. Alright, and then I have another area of question on the, was looking at the evaluations. And it shows the two firms that were being evaluated. On one of them, they scored a zero for Contractor's Prior Experience. And I kind of thought they were a firm that we did business with, so I was wondering if you could explain that to us, please.
Yes, ma'am. And this evaluation process in that particular category, what that takes into account are whenever the firms submit, when a contractor submits, they also submit a list of references that then the procurement department sends out and asks to get those references returned. In this particular case, those were not returned. They were all sent out, but none were returned. As far as experience with the district, there's another category that has past experience with Fort Bend ISD. In that particular one, we did give them 4.2 out of 5 points.
Alright, so, so we're saying, so those reference forms, who handles that, sending that, getting that information?
The procurement department sends those out.
Okay, so, so that gets kind of delegated to them and, well, okay. I don't know. It just seems, it just seems kind of unfortunate that that's sort of how it ends up. I don't know if anybody else has any...
We are, we're presently looking at, at this process right now and we're looking at reevaluating and coming back with a recommendation as we move forward.
Mr. Rosenthal.
And we're sure those references went out?
Yes, sir.
So, it's not the company that sends them out? We send them out, kind of on their behalf, checking for references?
Yes, sir. They, they submit a, a name and contact information, emails, whatever, that is sent out and then they're returned. In this case, none were returned.
And how long is that time period left open for returns, approximately?
It's approximately a week or so. It's, I don't think it's much more than a week.
Have we seen that before? I mean, I don't know who these guys are at all, but it does seem kind of strange.
Uh, yes, sir. It has happened in the past.
Okay.
Ms. Heliger.
Is it just electronic communication? Are we just, because there's only two, does someone just pick up the phone and say, "We, we sent you all out a reference. We did not receive a reference back from you all?"
I'm not certain whether that was done or not, but in our evaluation that we're doing, we're, that's one of the things that we are looking at, is to go ahead and make that more personal.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. We have additional questions?
Yes. Oh.
Sorry.
Well, my question, Mr. Perez, is, you know, a lot of times if, if we're just emailing these things out, sometimes these things go into spam. And did we reach out and call any of these references to see if they were going to give one, or is that illegal?
Sir, I'm, I'm not, I don't believe that it's illegal to call, because I receive calls from other districts, you know, quite often. But as far as whether they called or not, I'm not certain.
Okay, well, I'm just curious because there's quite a big spread between the two prices. Money is tight. And I think we had three bidders and one was a million dollars low and withdrew. So, in a case like that, it just seemed like we would be, take precautions to make sure we'd done all our homework instead of just, you know, we're filling in check marks and then, well, nobody called me, so here we go. It, you know, not considered. And that's costing us $500,000 more than if the other firm was successful. So...
You know, to follow up on that, especially considering what happened, you know, a few months ago when things didn't get sent out or published, that ended up costing us a lot of money.
Correct.
So, yeah, I would, I would, that might be another process that really needs to be, you know...
Correct. And if you look at the difference as well, you're talking about, that, that category is 14 points available. If you give them the 12.6 that the other contractors received, the numbers would then become more, more closely aligned. Yeah.
Well, okay, so I guess the other thing is, Mr. Perez, you, you mentioned that, so I agree with you, Mr. Rosenthal. Maybe that process should be looked at to make, make sure we're, things aren't falling through the cracks. And I kind of agree with that. And then the other thing I wonder is that when we're doing these evaluations and these folks have already worked for us, if we might want to consider weighting that a little more heavily or, or weighting that more heavily, because our experience and how they work with us seems to be more important, in my mind, than how they would work with other people out, away from us. So, maybe when you're revising it, that'll be something you guys will consider or think about. But it just seems a little bit logical to me, but I'm not scoring these, so I don't know. And I will be happy to listen to what you, what you guys come back with. Does this have, if this, these change, would this have to come back to the board if the percentages or point scores change? Do we have to approve that on a CSP, the breakdown?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Ms. Heliger.
I'm going to follow up again with what Mr. Rice stated. I think for a $500,000 difference, I think it's worth picking up the phone and asking for the reference.
So, how long do you think, so you guys are evaluating this evaluation process right now? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And what is your timeline for that?
We're, we want to get it turned around as quickly as possible, but we, there's a lot of projects that are already, you know, bid out and everything, you know, so we can't, well, we can, but it would delay the projects if we start changing it midstream. So, what I'm looking at is coming back to the board for something, you know, that the Phase Three projects and then anything, you know, going forward after that.
So, changing the evaluation process for Phase Three?
Yes, even though some of Phase Three projects are already getting, you know, close to be in bid, but we're going to try to get it done as quickly as possible. I'm working with procurement to go ahead and get that process turned out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perez. Mrs. James, more, another question?
Well, just one other thing. I'll just kind of pull it back to the broader picture because I think one of the things that's important to the board is, you know, having the most, getting the most value, getting for our money and using our money efficiently. And, and, and so that comes down to reducing costs in a lot of sense because the scope of these things is pretty well-defined. And I guess it seems like, you know, we talked about this a little bit last week, but I'm just not certain that the way the contracts are structured and the whole process is structured that we're, have the right incentives in place for keeping our costs down. And so, maybe as part of this whole, I don't know if that fits in or not, but it just seems to me that in the, in the bidding process and the contracting process, we might, there might be some changes to make that could help us to use our money more wisely. And if, and if so, I'd like to, to hear about those and know about those.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Please vote. Thank you, Mrs. James. Please vote. Motion passes. Alright, action items, we have the naming of several schools, and I know some of our audience members have been waiting to get to this portion, so we will start with approval for naming of Middle School 15, Dr. Whitbeck.
Well, good evening, Dr. Dupreeh and members of the board, I just wanna give you a brief overview.
Let's go ahead and have the motion first, and then I'll turn it over to you.
Motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenthal and a second by Mr. George. Dr. Whitbeck, sorry about that.
That's okay, we just want to give you just a brief overview of the process, it has been a very busy semester in the namesake world. We have been busy with a lot of committees, we've been working on bringing forward six, as you well know, since you have already approved the James Reese Technical Center, as well as the Bonnie Beard Agriculture Center. So tonight, just as a recap for our audience, and to remind everyone that we follow Board Policy CW Local when forming the committees, it clearly outlines the composition of the committees, and each of them are stakeholders in that particular area of where the facility is located. We had this year, we sought community input for the entire month of September, and we received over 2,200 nominations for six facilities, it's probably more participation than in Fort Bend history, and that's exciting. So from that point, each of the nominations are narrowed to the schools or facility in which they nominated for, sometimes a name would be submitted for all, many of them, or just one of them, and then the committees met, and tonight you have these recommendations before you. I do want to commend Mr. Dave Rosenthal for being our board representative on all six, he was a trooper, and so he'll be reading the bios for you tonight, but we're excited to bring you four new campuses, and that will just add to the legacy and the traditions of Fort Bend ISD.
Thank you, Dr. Whitbeck. Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say it was, it was really a rewarding and quite amazing process, I think it was a successful process, there was a lot of input, a lot of discussion, a lot of great discussion, and I think, I know I'm very excited about the names that have come forward tonight, and so I'd like to begin by, are we gonna do these separate?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do Middle School 15, so this is going, proposed to be the Ronald Thornton Middle School. Mr. Thornton served Fort Bend ISD from 1989 until his passing in 2010, he served as an inspirational band director and fine arts department chair at Willeridge High School, numerous student nominations described him as an exemplar of honor, pride, discipline, and excellence. Under his leadership, Willeridge High School Band excelled in numerous competitions such as the Rose Bowl and Orange Bowl, as well as many other national platforms. He influenced many talented individuals, not only to aspire to be great, but to explore talents beyond their imagination, on and off the field. Ronald Thornton was described as a pillar in the Fort Bend and Missouri City communities, he was a father, brother, grandfather, and uncle to so many individuals that were not even related to him. His theme was honor, pride, and discipline, which hung in a banner in his band hall. He taught his kids to compete with their heart and soul. According to the many students and citizens who advocated for his namesake, his legacy lives on in their hearts, and the lessons learned from him will never be forgotten.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Okay, I'm gonna ask the board members to please vote. Motion passes. Congratulations to those who are here, and we appreciate you being here. Okay, we'll move on to the naming of Elementary School 48, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenthal and a second by Mrs. James. Dr. Whitbeck, did you have anything to add for this one?
No, I was just going to recognize members of the Thornton family that were here, if you don't mind?
Yes, let's do that.
We have Ronald Thornton Jr., and his son, and Monique Thornton, his daughter, and also many friends and family, so if you would stand, if you're here for Ronald Thornton tonight.
Thank you again for being here. Okay, Mr. Rosenthal?
Okay, the recommendation for Elementary School 48 is Donald Leonetti Elementary School. Donald Leonetti was raised in Missouri City, and was a prominent presence in the community, graduating from Dulles High School in 1988. As a founder and owner of Leonetti Graphics for 25 years, he donated many hours and dollars toward the advancement of local public education. His company was responsible for writing shirts, uniforms, and signage to numerous organizations, schools, and athletic teams. Additionally, he devoted many hours to young life, and was instrumental in founding the Ridge Point chapter of the organization. His philanthropic nature carried over to all aspects of the community, including service to his church and serving as a mentor to many students. Those nominating Donald described him as a person who brought passion, laughter, and life to any room he entered. He was a resident of Sienna Plantation where his wife and children live today. He will be remembered for his big heart, generous spirit, and longtime support of Fort Bend Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. If the board will please vote. Motion passes. Dr. Whitbeck?
And we would like to introduce some members of the Leonetti family. Tonight we have Donald's mother, Roseanne Leonetti, his wife Jenny Leonetti, his sister Joanne, his son Matthew, who's a 2014 graduate from Ridge Point High School, and his daughter Lauren, who is a current junior at Ridge Point High School, as well as many other friends and family, so congratulations to the Leonetti family.
Thank you all for being here, and congratulations. Alright, we will now consider approval of naming Elementary School 49, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenthal and a second by Mrs. James. Mr. Rosenthal?
Okay, no, no comments? Are you, okay, okay. The motion is to approve James C. Neal Elementary School. Lieutenant James Clinton Neal was a 19th century American soldier and politician, most noted for his role in the Texas Revolution and the early defense of the Alamo. Neal commanded the Twin Sisters during the Battle of San Jacinto. Neal is credited with discharging the famous brass cannon that ignited the Texas Revolution. Capturing Neal's performance in Gonzales, D.C. Barrett wrote Sam Houston, "He was the first in camp whose experience was sufficient to mount and point a cannon at the enemies of Texas and of liberty in our land." Barrett also wrote that Neal was a gentleman held high in esteem of his fellow citizens, brave and patriotic. He responded to the first call of his country when danger and invasion threatened us. While Neal was lesser known than others in Texas history, his namesake provides continuity in the area, joining the ranks of Fort Bend Schools Travis, Bowie, Crockett, and Seguin.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Board members, please vote. Motion passes.
We have no ancestors from the Alamo here tonight, I'm sorry.
I just wanna be sure, I don't wanna miss anyone. You don't know that for sure now, do you? Alright, 12D, naming of Elementary School 50, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenthal and a second by Mrs. James. Mr. Rosenthal?
Motion to name Elementary School 50, James Patterson Elementary School. James Patterson began his career as a math teacher and coach at Dulles Junior High in 1965, he then moved to Dulles High School to teach and became the head basketball coach. In 1975, he became assistant principal at Dulles High School and principal in 1984. In 1992, James was asked to open Elkins High School and remained in that position until his retirement from Fort Bend ISD in 1998. James then dedicated his life to serving in the community and local government. Mr. Patterson's leadership continues as he currently serves as a Fort Bend County Commissioner. He is a major supporter of many community organizations such as the ARC, an organization created to support citizens with special needs, who have honored him for his countless contributions. Additionally, he advocates for career and technical education, and initiated programs such as the Buyer's Club, designed to raise money to purchase animals from students in FFA, who do not make the sale at the Fort Bend County Fair. James Patterson has been described as dedicating his life to the betterment of Fort Bend ISD students and the community. He will serve as a proud example of leaving a legacy through quality teaching, leading, and philanthropy.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Board members, please vote. Motion passes. Do we have anyone here, commissioners?
Mr. Patterson was, he's unable to be here tonight, but he sends his very humble appreciation, and he will address the board in the near future, it's very, very honored.
Thank you, Dr. Whitbeck. Okay, so I think I speak on behalf of the board that we are all very honored to be able to name these schools, and dedicate them to relatives of many of you who are sitting here today, we're very glad you could be here and be a part of this, and we look forward to the wonderful things that these schools are gonna do for the kids at Fort Bend ISD, so thank you all very much. Item 12E, we will consider approval of the blanket easement with Center Point Energy, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve as presented. Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Ms. Heliger. Do we have discussion? Hearing...
Yeah, this will be the one I'll abstain from.
Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. And finally, 12F, approval of a resolution calling on the Texas 85th Legislature to repeal the A through F rating system, and develop a community-based accountability system, may I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George, do we have discuss, do we have a presentation on this, Dr. Dupreeh? Do we have discussion by the board members? I'll just...
I just wonder if we could send that to them written in iambic pentameter? Or perhaps a limerick?
I think we should, Mr. Rice, I think that's an excellent idea.
A limerick?
It's not even 10 o'clock yet. So I just wanna say that I asked for this to, we discussed having this pulled out as a separate resolution, we know Tasby's been passed a separate resolution, this is part of our, of the accountability resolution that we passed in October, but this, we pulled this out not to be a separate priority, but a separate resolution to send a stronger message to the Texas Legislature about this particular issue that's gonna have such an incredible impact, so that is the reason for it being pulled out, and we have several school districts who are doing that as well, so I submit this for your proposal. I would love for you to read it, Mrs. James, thank you.
Well, I'd like to read it too, because I feel about the same way about it as Mr. Rice does. Whereas the Texas Legislature has enacted legislation that requires the Commissioner of Education to implement a public school rating system that would assign A through F grades to schools and districts beginning in the 2017-18 school year, and whereas at least 16 states have implemented a similar rating system using A through F grades for school districts, schools and districts, and to date, there is no definitive research that suggests these ratings have improved student or school performance. And whereas, in a recent statewide survey conducted by the State Board of Education, an overwhelming majority of Texans said they do not want standardized test scores to serve as the primary basis for a public school rating system, and whereas the majority, 55% of the A through F grades, will be based on the State of Texas Assessment of Academic Readiness, the STAR, a high-stakes standardized test that does not accurately measure student learning, and whereas the STAR provides little meaningful information to guide student learning, inform teachers, or report academic progress to parents, and whereas the Commissioner's proposed rating system utilizing A through F grades for schools and districts includes five domains and 23 unrelated indicators to determine a single grade, leaving the public with an invalid, disconnected reflection of school quality.
Can you read that again?
Exclamation point.
Yeah, exclamation point, underline, double underline. Whereas the Commissioner's proposed rating system utilizing A through F grades for schools and districts creates a false impression about students, ignoring the unique strengths of each school, and unfairly reduces each student's worth to a school's assigned grade, and whereas Fort Bend ISD takes actions to ensure the district operates within the framework of the district's core beliefs and commitments, and its mission to transform teaching and learning by inspiring and equipping all students to pursue futures beyond what they can imagine, and whereas we embrace meaningful accountability that informs students, parents, and teachers about the learning needs of each student and each school, and whereas we believe our state's future prosperity relies on high-quality education system that prepares students for college and careers, and without such a system, Texas's economic competitiveness and ability to attract new business will falter, and now, it is therefore resolved that the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees respectfully calls on the Texas Legislature to repeal the rating system utilizing A through F grades for schools and districts, and develop a community-based accountability system that empowers school districts to design their own internal systems of assessment and accountability, that while meeting general state standards, allows districts to innovate and customize curriculum and instruction to meet the needs and interests of each student and their communities, and be it further resolved that this new system should encompass multiple considerations, reflect greater validity, and more accurately reflect what students know and can do in terms of the rigorous standards. Be it further resolved that this priority begins with the leadership of the Fort Bend Independent School District Board of Trustees, and together, we share one unified message to all involved, we believe all children can learn, we have high expectations for each of the students we serve, we want to use all resources to make a difference in the lives of each child, the future of Texas depends on educating our growing enrollment with diverse needs, and the public schools are charged by the Texas Constitution with this great mission for Texas. Approved and adopted this 12th day of December 2016.
Thank you, Mrs. James, yes, I feel like applauding after that. And I'd like to put an exclamation point on it, board members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Alright, item 13, we're gonna review future board meeting agenda items, Dr. Dupreeh?
The items are outlined for you in the board book, so I won't read them to you, but you can see there's a number of reports coming up in January about a variety of issues, from program evaluation to A through F accountability, as well as our Police Department accreditation, which would be very good news, and we'll also be beginning to launch the 2017-18 budget process in January, there's also a number of bond program projects slated to be on the agenda in January, along with attendance boundaries for our new schools that were named this evening. with attendance boundaries for our new schools that were named this evening, and an update on the 2017-18 calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Do we have any other questions or comments from the board members? May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved that we adjourned this meeting.
This meeting is adjourned, 9:59.